All right, well, we have a lot to discuss tonight. And so we will go ahead and start our study session. I'd like to start first with the information about the mask mandate. We do have several things to talk about, and so we'll be very concise with our time in our speaking. But what I want to start with to you all is since President Trump declared the United States of America in a state of emergency due to COVID pandemic on March 13th, of our country has been at war with each other. It has pitted brother against brother in what is best for our country. Here in Yukon, we shut our city down to slow the virus down so we would not overburden our hospital. Since that time, several other proclamations have been presented. The last proclamation by myself, which is granted me via our city charter, was for servers, bartenders, and cooks to wear masks, and anyone entering a city-owned building would be required to wear a mask to protect our employees. That proclamation was discussed extensively here in this room and, of course, on Facebook. I offered to have that proclamation be voted on, but no one at the council asked for that to be done. I've been criticized for making a decision on my own, which I have not. There was input from the administration, from city council, and from many medical professionals. So to rebut that, I created a COVID task force. I asked that each city council could be a member. I could only have one at a time, so we didn't violate the Open Meetings Act. Jeff Whitten is the only one who responded that he wanted to be on, but because he has a day job, like most of us, he wasn't able to attend. I also asked that they could have a representative from each ward be present at that meeting to represent them. Jeff Whitten gave me one person who wanted to be on that, and then I appointed someone. This group meets every other week with specialists, and they weigh in on their field. At the end of each meeting, we would say, what would we like to see happen? I then sent it to each council member and asked if they wanted to see anything change. No one brought anything up for change. From the first meeting, we had about three who wanted to implement a mandatory mask. Every meeting, they would say, we have to do this. Last week, though, that changed. After everything was presented, everyone on the task force said they felt it was time for the city council to make some decisions. If I had not brought forth that information that they gave us that day and their request, I would remiss in my duties as mayor. That would be like going to the doctor and then going home and following what they tell me to do on Grey's Anatomy instead. I felt like I had to bring that information here. Since the task force asked that it be voted on, I put it on the agenda. If I had not put it on the agenda after the study session, if the council asked for it to be voted on, we would have had to wait two weeks. So I put it on the agenda, and if the council decides they don't want to vote on that, it can be stricken. I was being preempted, because that is what my task force asked. But of course, none of that made it out to everyone. So I came to you tonight to present the information from the COVID task force. And even though some people have made up their mind how they're going to vote, I ask that you listen respectfully to the people that represent this task force. At our meeting that day, the Canadian County Health Department said our numbers of active daily cases had doubled. For the last four months, I checked the numbers daily. Those aren't numbers, they're faces to me. We averaged 101 to 105 daily active cases, but two weeks ago, that changed. We went to 235 to 245 daily active cases. That's a huge jump. Today, I checked, and we have 203 active cases. We asked about, are they double testing people and reporting people, twice? Canadian County Health Department said, no, we are not doing that. Even if they get rapid tests every day, they have a number, and so we're only counting them one time. Spanish Cove was there, their representative weighs in. They've been asking from the very beginning to have a mask mandate. They have a whole population that's at risk. They take their people to Oklahoma City to shop because they have a mask mandate. Our fire department, at that time when we had our meeting, had one confirmed case. The fire person was at work unaware that he was contagious until he started feeling bad. If that had progressed, we could have an entire shift of firemen out. We don't have a B team. We have shift one, shift two, and no substitutes for that. Our police department at that time had two communication officers out waiting for tests. One had already tested positive. Again, you can't call in for subs for police officers. Our animal control had to shut down due to a positive case. Another gym had to shut down. Our schools have seen cases, both private and public. Dr. Simaroff today said almost all the cases at school can be traced back to an outside of school exposure. They're not being exposed in school where they're wearing masks. Integris was not at the meeting, but she phoned her information in. So from Teresa Gray, this is when things got a little different for us. Teresa Gray, the CEO of Integris Yukon, said our hospitals, both Yukon and OKC Integris, are full. Patients are being diverted to other hospitals as far away as grown. The nurses and doctors are exhausted. They have several tests positive, and there are no extra nurses to replace them, so they are working long, extra-hour days. They have to have a break, she asked. They are using alternative cleaning supplies because they can't get their normal order. Because of the fact that we didn't have a working nurse there, I have asked someone who is a COVID nurse to come and do just a three-minute scenario of what that looks like, and from a different hospital. Jay? You want to state your name?
My name is Jay Not, and I am a resident of Yukon, currently working in Midwest City at Alliance Healthcare there, and I am working on the COVID ward. I've got 28 years of experience, and since the COVID stuff has started, over 90% of my shifts have been in the COVID ward. I don't spend much time in critical care, other than taking care of COVID patients. Ladies and gentlemen, the virus is real, and it is serious. As of today's data from the state health officials, over 1,300 Oklahomans have been reported as new cases today alone with 11 new deaths. That's just today. Total numbers are showing that 2.5 of the total population of the state have contracted the virus with a death rate somewhere above 1%. That may not seem like a lot to you, but I ask you this, city council: What's an acceptable death rate to you? I asked you that because this comparison to the flu has been a benchmark comparison in Oklahoma. It is 11 times more deadly than the flu. The current CDC models are showing nothing but the death rate rising, and now we're entering into the cold and flu season. As a side note, I urge you to get your influenza vaccine, because as we all know, vaccines cause adults. But back to the topic at hand, the second wave begins, it's starting to gather around our country, and the only argument I'm hearing is, has the first wave ended? Or is it just one continual graft? COVID-19 is already the third-leading cause of death in the country. It does not need to be exacerbated, especially when it can be so easily addressed. As I previously stated, the CDC predictions are showing that as many as 3,000 additional cases per day nationwide could be reached by the month of December. Folks, that's 90,000 additional cases of COVID-19. Now, this is nationwide. During this time, the medical professionals have enjoyed increased respect as they are on the front lines battling this deadly virus. You have a unique opportunity tonight to do your part, help out the medical professions. The solution is quite simple. You had the opportunity to vote in favor of a mask mandate before it continued in the city of Yukon. I hearken back to some of the patients I've taken care of and talked to some of my fellow nurses in other hospitals around the country. I've watched many times in my professional pursuits on how horrible this disease can actually be. It literally steals the air from you. COVID-19 leaves the victim struggling to breathe. Pneumonia breath, the spirit of life is sucked out of them. From a 90-year-old first-time grandfather who only wanted to see his great-grandchild once, but ended up going on a ventilator and dying as his family spoke to him, telling him it was okay to relinquish his life to God. They weren't able to be at his bedside, but we did do FaceTime with them, and they sang his favorite hymns as he slipped into God's hands with grace and dignity. There are others. I want you to think about the 20-year-old first-time mother that can't be away, that has to be away from her newborn baby because her oxygen saturation levels won't go above 60% because of this virus. We have friends that have transplants and are on anti-rejection medications, walking amongst us in Yukon. This makes them more susceptible to the virus. We have chemotherapy patients that are in similar immunocompromised situation. Many of these lives could and would have been spared had we been more robust about implementation of masks nationwide. As we are aware, each life matters to God, and each life passing has that effect on families or persons that they leave behind. All lives do matter if these lives have taken, if all these lives taken have left an impact. I could give you more, even more graphic examples of watching patients cough up blood as they struggle to breathe to get the vital pneumo. I could go into detail, COVID-19 doesn't just affect the lungs. In fact, I wish that's all it did. There's cases of COVID brain where the patient is so cognitively impaired that they are combative and scared and fighting staff as they struggle to breathe and do not understand completely what is happening to them. We can mitigate this by the usage of a simple mask, and I see everybody in this room has one on. A mask mandate for the city of Yukon should be left in place without delay. Epidemiologists are all in agreement that a second wave is forthcoming. The only real question is whether we've lived the first wave, as I said before. To break it down in simple form, masks save lives. Most of us in this room profess to be Christians. What's the greatest commandment Christ gave to us? Was it not to love our neighbors as ourselves? How do we truly say we are following that marching order if we are not protecting our neighbors? An enforceable mask mandate is a step towards obedience to that command. I urge you to make the proper decision and extend the mask mandate. Together, we can and will beat this horrible pandemic. We need your leadership on this matter. This year 2020 was designated as the year of the nurse, and this nurse is begging you to help mitigate this pandemic. And please wash your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. I felt like we needed someone who was actually in the field, and we were missing that from our COVID task force. So I will be asking Jay to join us if he obliges. So after hearing everything that was brought to that table, I asked each one of the COVID task force members, what is your thoughts? Most all of them wanted a mask mandate. The couple that didn't want the mask mandate at least wanted it to go to the council and have a vote. So what do I do? Do I have a task force and repeatedly ignore their recommendations? What's the point of having one? So I put it on the agenda. What do I want from all of this? I want people to do the right thing and wear a mask without having to be told to. I don't want to do a mask mandate. I want us to do the right thing. But folks, we've been trying this for six months, and it's just not working. But I don't vote for what I want. I vote for what's best for Yukon, and I haven't made my final decision. That is what this study session is for, so we can look at the information and make educated votes. I remind you that there are two sides. I counted up my emails today, and my text messages, and my phone calls, and they're just about equal from both groups. There's a whole nother group out there that are angry we haven't done more. It's not just the people who don't want to wear masks. The ones who want it are just as angry. But it's okay for people to be angry. I'm angry. I want this all to go away. But it hasn't, and we are not able to keep our community safe in our own community hospital. I think we have to stop and slow it down for a while. So to dispel the rumors, if this passes, even as it is, without rewriting it, you do not have to wear a mask in your own yard or walking down the street, except when you're six feet apart. Does every council member get to vote? Yes. Will it be enforced? I truly do not see how. Does this give Mayor Selby power? No. But it puts the responsibility on the other council members. Is this forever? No. It has an ending date in December. Did you have a say, the people? Yes, we received countless. Well, this hurt our economy? No. I'm hoping it will help, because we have people who won't shop or eat here because we don't have a mask mandate. I know the other half are going to stop if we do get one. Will this help? Well, it can't hurt. And yes, I truly believe it will help our hospitals so they can catch up. The big question is, will I push this through even if it gets voted down by the city council? No, because if that was the case, I would have just put it into effect based on my ability through the charter of our city without the city council's approval. Do I want to do this? I want, at the end of the day, to say, I have looked at everything, and that I have made the best decision for this community, whether it was popular or not. I love Yukon, and I love our people, but I will respect the vote of this city council discussion.
I have a one-year-old baby in my home, my seventh child, who weighs 11 pounds and had open-heart surgery when she was three months old. I have another daughter in high school who's type 1 diabetic. One of my parents works in the medical field doing COVID tests and was positive last week. I have a grandmother in Rancho nursing home that I haven't seen since March in person. I have two friends that I've worked with whose mothers have died in the last few months. One died today. I want to be very careful in our discussion to ever equate our decision whether or not to make a mask mandate with whether or not we care about the people around us. It is not the same thing, and that is not an okay thing to say to somebody. If I vote no on a mandate, it does not mean that I don't care about my friends' mothers or my grandma or the two children in my home or my parents. So I have some other questions that I may put forth in a moment, but I want to say that before this conversation continues, that voting yes or no on a mask mandate, a citywide mandate, does not equal loving people or not loving people.
I thought you were going to make more comments. How did your family do? Because I understand they had COVID.
I'm not going to discuss our personal medical situation.
Some people are saying it's like the flu, and some people are saying, no, it's much more difficult than that. I think every person is different. Other conversation, that's what this is. Jeff? You're on.
I've been against a mandate from the beginning. I think, I'm not saying that we should be not using masks. I use one every day. I think that's our choice. We should do what's best for each other, but I don't think it's our position to say that you have to or else you will get whatever. I just, I think that's crossing the line.
Okay. Donna, do you have any comments? You're on.
Well, I don't feel that people should be forced to do anything. I think that people should be smart in everything that they do.
Rick, do you have anything to ask?
Yeah, I kind of followed Donna Yanda's thought process. We've gone through many diseases in this country. We've gone through wars and everything else, and we all had to take care of each other. Some of us didn't make it, and some of us did. We had malaria, we had polio, we've had a bunch of things hit this country, but we didn't shut down everything. We took precautions and then moved on. But we never forced anybody to do anything, and that's really a problem when you start to force people to do things that they don't want to do. So that's my thought on it.
Another thing I'd like to say is, I feel like the numbers are inflated, terribly inflated. I've had a situation this last week where I had to deal with situations related to that topic, and I'm very unhappy with the situation and how it turned out. So I just feel like the numbers are inflated, and it's being used sometimes as a tool to maybe gain, financial gain in certain situations.
I have a few more things and possibly questions, I guess.
Okay.
So I'm not going to claim to be a scientist, so I'm not going to take that route. But I do try to look at the data, as you mentioned you also do. Oklahoma City has had a mask mandate since July 17th. There's been very little difference in their numbers and our numbers as far as increase.
Did they have the jump two weeks ago?
Yes, they did have a jump two weeks ago when we did. So the last three weeks, their average is a little bit more, their average is 33 per 100,000, and our average is 21 per 100,000, even with our spike. So like I said, I'm not a scientist. I'm not going to say if masks work or don't work, but mandates don't seem to make a difference. And we need to consider that. People, I mean, even in your opinion, it won't be enforced, it'll be difficult to enforce.
Well.
So if you go out, you see people wearing masks, not everybody. We don't have the data on this, but I would venture to guess that the numbers, percentage of people wearing masks, aren't that much higher in places where they're mandated.
Yeah, I don't know.
And so that's something to consider, but the point is, we do have a case study in several places, Norman, Oklahoma City, and Tulsa, and the masks mandates haven't seemed to make a difference in the numbers. So we need to consider that. But in reference specifically to the draft that we've seen, I have a proposed update to the current emergency declaration.
Did this draft come from Oklahoma City? Or did we change it around?
Okay, so it says, it says, "All citizens win in public to wear masks." And I'm not trying to pick this apart, I just want to point out some reasons why, as it sits, and I've said this publicly already, I can't vote for it as it sits. Because it doesn't say if you're in groups or if you're near people, it just says if you're in public.
Right.
And you have to go by the text, not any one person's interpretation of the text. So I know Jeff gave an example, and he kind of gave a wild example on purpose if he walks to his mailbox. Well, technically, yes. Technically, yes, he could be fine for not wearing his face mask to the mailbox, because it's not spelled out in the text. We also have no exemptions, no medical exemptions, no exemptions for, I'm still in the lawn business, if I'm owing a three-acre lot, I'm the only person out there, but I'm a business offering a service, I have to wear a mask. It's not, there's no designations or exemptions for what these things actually mean. So as it sits, you know, I think there's room for discussion and maybe even compromise when we're talking about wearing masks, but as it sits, I don't see any way that this council could pass such a mandate.
Any others? Like I said, this is a working document.
Yeah, I do have one, I did have one other thing brought to my attention. The draft also says city employees, or it says members of the public entering city buildings, but what about the city employees? I don't know if that's, had a specific question, that includes city employees?
Right, that was in the last proclamation, that the city employees had to, right?
I think it appears that the document that we've been looking at has some holes in it. What I'd like to suggest, we table it, get the document organized so that we could at least sit down and discuss it where it's more compatible, because right now, as you can see, it's not going anywhere. So I think that document needs to be worked on, and I'd like to table it, make a motion to table it, and let's move on.
We can't do that right now, because this is just a study session.
Okay.
But you can keep that in mind for later.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions? Jim?
I have nothing.
Judge Miller?
You can't vote at this time.
Right, no, just comments or questions that you have about it.
I have no comment.
Anyone else? All right, then we will move on to the next order of business, and I believe that is...
Comprehension.
The what?
Comprehension.
Right. So I'm turning it over to you, Mr. Crosby.
This is the next item on the agenda, I believe, is discussion in regards to the Zoom.
Oh. Okay, we're going to talk about...
Video conference.
The video conferencing.
Judge Miller, you can get up and discuss that.
Do what?
Judge Miller has...
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you very well. Are you turned on?
I'll try to get closer.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Councilman, my name is Gary Miller. I have prepared, and I'll pass this out, a resolution based on the state statute. I had not studied that state statute until I sat down and worked on this resolution, and I find out that there's a lot of things we're required to do that we have not been doing. If you're going to Zoom in from a location, you have to have a room for that location. The public has to be advised of that room. The public has to be invited. They can come, they can look, they can listen, and they can participate.
Even if it's in your home?
Doesn't make any difference. Statute says a remote location, and we have not done that. So there are other things that are in here that are required by statute. So I would urge the council to look, and if we're going to Zoom, let's do it in compliance with the state law. Otherwise, I would ask the council not to consider doing Zoom, and I'll pass this resolution out, make sure everybody's got a copy.
I know when I looked at it, and I talked about this, I was in a mayor's roundtable the other day, and they were talking about this, that if you go to an executive session, you can do that Zoom, and I don't see how you can if executive session is private, if you have a public. How would we be able to do that?
Mr. Miller, is there anything in this draft of Resolution 2020 dash nothing, I guess, that is not in the state statute? Could you point those out to us?
I would be glad to. There is a provision that I have added that talks about noise level, that the remote location has to be in a place where there's not a lot of noise that would be distracting, or, excuse me, or the council person at that location could not be heard. So yes, that is one change. Another one, excuse me, the mayor just touched on it. The original bill said you could not do executive session. There has been another bill come out that now says you can, but the Attorney General warns and urges you not to do that, because unless you're really sophisticated with your electronics, it's too easy for someone to be able to tap in and hear that executive session. And as all the council knows, that is a private conversation among councilmen only that is never supposed to be disclosed. So the Attorney General is urging you not to do that, and in this resolution, it says you will not. So those are a couple of things that did not come out of the state statute.
It also has in here, the public will be allowed to participate and speak during a meeting from the video conferencing site as if they were on the side of the meeting. And so if I have it in my home, they could speak from my home.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would have to let them in my home.
So if we did strike just that line about having executives, so we would go ahead and allow ourselves to have executive session via Zoom, do we know what the procedure would be if somebody, if I had a room at the library, for instance, and somebody comes in to be a part of that meeting, and we go into executive session, do I, do we know what that looks like? Do I ask them to leave? Do I leave?
Mr. Gillett, I'd have to refer back to the tech folks for the city, because I'm not that knowledgeable about Zooming and how it works and all that. I think we would have to have their input and their assistance in being able to set it up so you could go into executive session without anyone being able to tap into it.
Okay. Now, a question on the room part. That almost seems like the each site and room were, that almost reads to me like it's referring to like a Zoom room, not actually physical room. Like if we were into a meeting that they would have to be allowed into the Zoom conferencing room.
And I understand your interpretation. I think it is the same thing as this room right here. You have to have space for them to be there. They have to be able to see, to speak, and participate. Any documents that the council sees has to be made available to the public at the same time. So I think they're talking about a physical room and not a Zoom room.
If you had it, everybody could Zoom from their own home, then there's no telling what you would have going on.
Well, and one of the reasons, Councilman, is the statute requires that... Well, and one of the reasons, Councilman, is the statute requires that notice be given, in the regular notice, of where you're going to be doing Zooming, an address, a phone number, all of that stuff is required by the statute.
It also says in there, I don't know if it says it in here, that if you say you're going to Zoom, you can always come to the meeting.
That's correct, you can't do the reverse, Mayor.
If you say you're coming to the meeting at the last minute, you get sick, you can't Zoom, it has to have that agenda notice, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody else have any questions? What about this one, it says, "Each meeting shall require a quorum present at the meeting site." So that means we would still have to have a quorum here?
Yes.
So if everybody's Zoom but me, we can't have that meeting, right?
You're going to have to have at least three present at this physical location, and the others can Zoom.
Okay. So only two. Anybody else? And this, the new bill that passed stays in effect for how long, is it just indefinite, or is there an end date?
The statute is predicated on a November fifteenth date, or when the governor should terminate it, and he can terminate it before that date. So it's all predicated on either the statute date or the governor's actions.
So this only lasts till November fifteenth, after that, we won't be allowed to Zoom unless they extend.
After that, you cannot do it, unless the legislature, of course, the legislature's out of session, so they can't extend it between now and November. So it appears that November fifteenth will be a drop dead date for it.
All right. Anybody else have any questions regarding this?
No, thank you for your work, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You know, it's a new time, a new age, and we have new laws, and so we want to make sure we're being compliant with the state. All right, now, Mr. Crosby.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have Robbie Williams here this evening, and he's going to discuss the comprehensive plan, which we've been moving forward on, and have some discussion in the past, Rob?
Triad Design Group has, and working with Johnson and Associates, they're engineers and planners. Johnson and Associates, they do the planning for the city of Yukon with Triad. So I have Mark with Johnson and Associates, he's the one that put the document together, and so he's going to speak. And we know we've got about twenty-five minutes, so everybody should have a copy. So he'll briefly go through everything.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Mark Zitzow with Johnson and Associates. With me tonight is Jessica Bloy, an urban planner in our office, Cindy Wright in our office, Tim Johnson, A.J. Kirkpatrick with ADG, Kelly Driscoll with our office. This is a very, this is a group effort. We worked extensively with city staff, with community groups, the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street organizations, to guide this document and put it together. So, can I control these slides? Okay, next slide. So this was the team, it included a lot of city staff and a lot of meetings, citizen surveys. All of that data is what guided our drafting of this document. Next slide. So, Kathy, can I borrow your copy? So, I wanted to run through, I'm not going to go through the entire comprehensive plan, because I know time is tight and it's a two-hundred-page document, but I wanted to walk you through the structure and what's in it. So, the slide in front of you is a table of contents. I'm going to go through each one of these parts rather quickly, so if you could go to the next slide. So, Chapter One is an introduction. What is the comprehensive plan, developing the comprehensive plan, and how this document is organized? This will be where you can go to kind of figure out the rest of the document. If you could go to the next slide. So, we'll talk just for a minute about what the comprehensive plan is. This document is used for city council, for planning commission, for staff, developers, residents, to review and look at how the city of Yukon is projected to grow over the next twenty years. This is important when making land use decisions. So you have, for lack of a better term, ammunition to review an applicant and say, "This is what we believe should occur." Do you conform with that, do you not make your land use decisions based off of that? If you could go to the next slide. So, this talks again to the process. So when Triad reached out and engaged Johnson and Associates, we began by looking at the existing comprehensive plan, see what worked, where you matched, reviewed your zoning code, your zoning map, and then we just kind of jumped in and started meeting with the community. We took all that input, and again, that's what led to the creation of this document. If you go to the next slide. The community snapshot is really just looking at the existing data for Yukon. Population trends, tapestry reports, demographic analysis, how much land is left to be developed. So if you go to the next slide, this is an example of what you'll find in the document. This is a really interesting page out of the document. This shows the commuting patterns for residents and workers in Yukon. How many people are working in Yukon that also live in Yukon? How many are driving into Yukon for work versus how many are leaving? You use this information for economic development purposes, restaurants, retail, daytime population. That's what this kind of gets to the heart of. Also in this chapter, you'll find your floodplain map, your developable area, how much left of Yukon is there to be developed. As you know, about fifty percent of Yukon is floodplain, which does pose a challenge to your future growth. You have about twenty-five hundred acres left of developable land that will have to last you really in perpetuity unless an annexation occurs. So if you could go to the next slide. All that information sets up the land use chapter. This is what gets to the heart of that development review and guiding Yukon's growth. If you could go to the next slide. So what was the goal of this chapter? It was to achieve a balance between residential land uses and other land uses in order to keep the city economy viable and desirable. So what does that mean? A healthy city has about thirty percent of its land dedicated to commercial uses. This is vitally important to Oklahoma communities, because we're sales tax driven. If you allow the rest of the land in Yukon to be developed as residential, that removes sales tax to maintain the roads, the water lines, and any other public infrastructure. So I'm going to run through a couple of these, if you could go to the next page. This is the land use map. As you can see, the blue swath, that's your floodplain, your floodway and one-hundred-year floodplain. And then the green, which is the next largest color, is your agricultural land. This is an area that, after discussion with the city manager, Triad Design Group, was determined to likely not be served under this comprehensive plan, which goes through 2040. So there's no expectation that utilities will reach that area for dense development or commercial development. If you could go to the next slide. This was the agricultural state, I got a little ahead of myself, but it shows that fifteen percent of the land use map is for agricultural purposes, and it's about twenty-five hundred acres. So when you look at these pages, this is what you would refer to if an applicant comes in for a rezoning, say, to a dense residential development, you would look at this and say, "Does it meet this criteria? Does it have a minimum one acre? If it does, it likely was not compatible with that area, which is why we designated it for agricultural." The agriculture section is unique. What we heard through the citizen survey, conversations with staff, was this important component of what makes Yukon Yukon, which was a small-town feel, agricultural feel. And so protecting a large portion of the area in Yukon as agricultural was important to our team and what we heard through our engagement. If you could go to the next slide. What you'll find in this is individual maps that show you exactly where those areas are. So it kind of breaks each component out, so you can easily identify what each land use typology or category is and where it is. If you could go to the next slide. We'll look at the low intensity. Low intensity would be your traditional, single-family neighborhood. Generally, that is about five units an acre or less. That'd be your six-thousand-ish square foot lots. So, we have the site design characteristics, so if someone proposes a rezoning, we're asking them to match the scale, neighborhood character, maybe what's around them. So there are components like that for each section of the land use plan. And if you go to the next map, what you'll see is that a bulk of Yukon, what we would call urbanized Yukon, is this low-intensity development. That's your single family. We did not seek to expand that further, again, to make sure that Yukon can maintain that healthy balance of commercial, residential, as your population continues to grow. If you go to the next slide. In the comprehensive plan, we also talk about transportation and mobility. This is everything that's in the chapter, if we go to the next slide, these are some questions from the resident survey. And I'll read one of them. "Would you like to have more pedestrian walkways, trails, bike paths linking Yukon with surrounding communities?" An overwhelming majority said yes. We saw this as kind of low-hanging fruit. Oklahoma City has invested a tremendous amount of money in their trails. Just by bridging that gap and getting your residents to them gives you access to millions of dollars of bikeways and pedestrian pathways that you didn't have to pay for, but your residents get to enjoy. So that's kind of where we were going with that. A majority did recognize traffic congestion was a problem in Yukon. When you dig down, you find that that's kind of peak times, eight AM, five PM. And through this, there is a recommendation that you look at a traffic plan to limit curb cuts on arterials, how to do that, and future projects that are already being funded in Yukon are addressed in here that speak to that. So the next slide, Chapter Five, is economic development. So we looked at the existing conditions, future economic development opportunities, and with every chapter, we make recommendations that planning commission and city council can look to for bond packages, sales tax increases, whatever funding mechanisms you're looking for for future projects. So the next slide. I kind of touched on this earlier. The high number of commuters leaving is an issue. It's a lot of communities outside of a major city face the same issue. It's a struggle for restaurant and retailers to grow and maintain their business because their daytime population is being sucked out for what would be considered primary jobs. So, one of the recommendations was to create this employment land that kind of sets aside land for your city, your city manager, and economic development director to look at to try and entice a call center, kind of a primary employer to bring some of those jobs into Yukon so your residents might not have to commute, which then is helping drive sales tax because they're here during the day. So, next slide. Is the housing. We looked at the existing conditions, the characteristics of your housing, what future demographics hold. And then we made recommendations on types of housing and land use categories. And so if you go to the next slide, we kind of get to those, and I apologize for moving quick, so if you have any questions, feel free to jump in. So what we noticed after reviewing the county data and the data provided by your GIS department, which, I'll pause there, your GIS team is incredible, you should be very lucky that you have that. Most communities we work in do not have near the data that you all have, so thank you, it made our job much easier. A large percentage of your housing was built between nineteen sixty and nineteen eighty. So, the question becomes, what happens with that housing? Has it either become a maintenance issue for existing homeowners? You know, some cities have rehabilitation grants for certain income levels, or for folks that might be retired that are no longer working to help maintain their property. With that nineteen sixty to nineteen eighty range, you also find that the homes tend to be on the smaller side. Since nineteen forty, average housing sizes have quadrupled. What used to be seven hundred square foot for a family of four is now over three thousand square feet for a family of two-point-one people per household. So we're using more space but not necessarily having larger families. And so, what that comes down to is market choice. Where can people moving to Yukon move to get that same type of house that they're looking for, that they might find in El Reno or Mustang? And so we talked to all of that in this chapter. If you go to the next slide. Again, much, many congratulations or kudos for your park system. They were well-regarded in the citizen survey that was done, as well as from the community that we talked to. You're right on target for the amount of park space per resident. So as you grow, you'll seek to expand parks, much like Yukon has done over the last couple decades. If you go to the next slide. So some of the recommendations, again, keep growing your green space as you grow your population. Find sustainable funding sources for the maintenance of those parks. As your demographics change, as your community grows older, younger, attempt to cater your park amenities to that group. Pickleball right now is wildly popular, and you're seeing a lot of communities invest in those types of parks, or that type of amenity in parks. And then look at your riparian corridors and your floodways that aren't developable. A lot of cities have begun putting their trails there. It's an inexpensive, necessarily inexpensive, but a way to expand that trail system along a safe pedestrian-only corridor where you're not potentially conflicting with vehicular traffic. So if you go to the next slide. This talks to the residents per public park. You're at twenty-four hundred, which is slightly over the national, but nothing that we felt was overly concerning. And we kind of mapped out all of your parks. We also looked at parks and private subdivisions. So that's one thing that's always difficult to track for a lot of communities, not for you, because you have a great GIS department. Yukon requires new developers to build open spaces part of their project, and so that open space does not get reflected in public park acres per one thousand residents. So that's why we didn't feel any concern that you were lacking in your park infrastructure. The next slide. Is public services and assets. This looked at water, sewer, storm sewer, libraries, city hall, everything the city owns. We went through, worked closely with the city manager, Mitchell Horp, Kathy, and of course, Triad. And so if you go to the, you were there, you were ahead of me, thank you. And so, some of those recommendations, continue to make sanitary sewer improvements, same with water. If there's a way to continue to secure, the recycling was one that came up in the survey, and there's been a lot of talk about that, of what recycling means right now with a lot of places not buying it, but that is something we heard, so it ended up as a recommendation. And then create an ADA transition plan for all public buildings, public sidewalks. It's something that a lot of cities have done recently as cities have been sued for not providing proper ADA access. So having that helps mitigate that from potentially happening. And last, we end with the appendix, which is future projects. We felt this was really important to put in, because as we talked through recommendations of park improvements, street improvements, mitigating traffic, you know, we wanted to put in here that Yukon's doing a lot of this already. And so as the comp plan gets updated, whether that's every two years, five years, this list can be updated, and you can almost use it as a checkbox. You know, we built the downtown park or pavilion, Taylor Park, you know, we've done X, Y, and Z. It's kind of to help you track the movement and progress of the city. So, those are the last two slides, and I'll leave it open for questions. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to work with you on a development review basis monthly, but we definitely appreciate the opportunity to help you with your comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, very, I love this data. This will be good reading. I love this data. This will be good reading.
I have questions.
Yes, okay.
You talked about annexation of Yukon. Have you got any recommendations of which way we're going or which way we should go to annex additional land to Yukon so that we can improve our tax base?
So I think that would be a separate study that would have to be done. I know Yukon, or sorry, Oklahoma City is on your north, they're on your south, and they're on your east, so.
We're surrounded.
When you start looking at it, you start looking westward expansion. And that's where a bulk of your developable land already exists. So I think that's a conversation that leadership and with Robbie's help from a utility standpoint, what makes the most sense to take into the city if you choose to. The other way is continue to just grow smartly and do the best you can with the infrastructure you have and try to accommodate your growth through your existing land.
Another question. Traffic count's so high, and I'm looking at your figure 4.12. Route 66 and Yukon Parkway is really a headache. I just don't know what we can do about it because they, they've got so much housing going up to the east of that intersection. And then they're using land, what's it called, Lake Shore Drive coming in. It's really a mess in there. That you've got Yukon Parkway, you've got Route 66, and then you've got people trying to get in on that street, sometimes illegally. But don't tell the police. But I've noticed them having a problem there. So I think we need to look at something, some kind of recommendation of fixing that intersection. Are you saying that we're gonna need another separate?
You would hire a traffic company, a traffic study to come in and take a look at that, Councilman? And they would have to look at all the different counts and do, watch the flow of traffic, not only throughout the day and also at peak periods that the problems really exist. And then they would come back and make some type of recommendation, signalization, different type of movement or do something like that. If you'd like that done and you need, if you would make a request, we'd see that call and bring that forward for your consideration.
And I'll add to that, the purpose of the comprehensive plan is to be a very broad, overarching recommendation. And so, Mr. City Manager, you are absolutely correct. When it comes down to an individual intersection, individual improvement, you'll definitely want to consult a traffic engineering professional.
Okay. Any other questions? I think we're gonna table the other item that was for, going to discuss tonight.
Well, we can table it or?
We have five minutes.
Yes, I think Claudia could handle it.
Okay, let's, let's, thank you so much. It was a beautiful report. I look forward to reading it.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Now, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Claudia has worked very difficult, hard on this deal and talking about playgrounds and what have you. And an opportunity came up from several companies that we could get almost at half cost to complete and playground install. And she'd been working on this last year and then came forward this year and finally completed it and had the proposal to make for the council to be considered at our next meeting. Claudia?
Madam Mayor and Councilman, my name is Claudia Kerschke. I'm the grant writer for the city. The Ranchwood Park Playground located at 200 Linda Lane has been in place since 2000. The current playground has seen many hours of play and is in need of replacement. The park is home to hundreds of soccer players and their siblings during soccer season. The city of Yukon has been offered the opportunity to receive a 50% discount on the playground equipment price if the purchase is made by October 30th. The city manager is requesting your consideration and approval of $174,945 to replace the playground with an inclusive playground for ages two to five, or two to 12. This approval would include equipment for two- to five-year-olds, five- to 12-year-olds, a soccer-themed pour-and-place surfacing, built-in shade structures, delivery installation, and a sanitizing station. The new playground would be approximately twice as large as the current playground. The playground would be purchased and professionally installed by play and park structures. And this would be the first totally inclusive park in the city of Yukon. Just so I can kind of explain to you the difference between ADA, which that occurred in 1990. All of our playgrounds are ADA accessible. Inclusive playgrounds, the objective of, is to include everyone. They are thoughtfully designed to provide a safe place where children of all abilities can play together and are developmentally appropriate for children with and without disabilities. They integrate all the senses and encourages social play. The current playground is located just south of the Ranchwood Park restroom that's about three years old. I have included with you in your packet the new playground with the cover, which is twice approximately in the red outline. Page two is the current playground and some of its faults. I almost say faults, some of its age and love. It's not accessible for two- to five-year-olds. It is not inclusive. There's no shade of the playground, and we know how hot it can get in the summers. And the musical element no longer works, and some of the protective surface and peeling is arresting equipment. On page three is an overview of the new playground. Page four is the two-to-five playground equipment, and pages five and six are the five-to-12-year-old equipment. I think this is a wonderful opportunity to get almost half-price and install playground by professionally installed people. And what an awesome, we don't have any playgrounds that have the pour-and-place surfacing right now. Just be an op, great opportunity for the citizens of Yukon to have.
I love it, and I appreciate all the hard work that you went into doing it. Can you show it to everybody? Is that not awesome? Okay, so we'll be voting on that in a few weeks? Okay.
We have a couple-minute break.
Okay, we have, we have two. Two minutes break.